Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 15th, 2016. Welcome to everyone in attendance. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and invite a roll call, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we have adoption of tonight's agenda. If there are no corrections or changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next up, public comment. This is for items not listed on tonight's agenda, and I believe we have one or two guests in the audience. Mr. Stewart, welcome.
I come in peace.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't need to remind you of our time limit, do I?
Right, I was gonna say, who's gonna put me on the clock?
I'll ask you to wrap it up if you're going too long.
Okay, but when does my clock start?
Now.
Okay. The last time I was here, the town's attorney said veterans are not allowed to smoke medical marijuana. Well, that's not necessarily true. On November 10th, 2015, just four short months ago, the Senate passed the For a Year 2016 Military Construction and Veterans Appropriations Bill, which includes language to allow Department of Veteran Affairs doctors to recommend medical marijuana to their patients in states where it's legal. There's no pot in VA pharmacies yet, but it's coming. I think it comes down to equal access. Point two, this emergency ordinance that we've been talking about, I believe it's invalid because it doesn't sound like an emergency. So I challenge the validity of this ordinance. I believe no one has shown a valid reason for declaring this ordinance as an emergency. I've heard your argument that it creates an odor. But what about cigars and cigarettes? They omit the most foul, putrid, poisonous odor in the world, I think. They kill 500,000 Americans every year. Where's your emergency ordinance on cigars and cigarettes? It seems like this ordinance is based in hypocrisy, discrimination, fear, and ignorance. But this invalid ordinance bears no reasonable relation to the threat of public safety, health, and welfare. Now, for my last point, you may want to look ahead, because when you arrest the first disabled person with a card, handcuff them, throw them in a cage, try to destroy their life, I believe there's gonna be a floodgate of lawsuits is going to open up. Most likely, cardholders will file a class action lawsuit against the town of Yountville. And after we list our causes of action, I think a judge will be compelled to hear our case. We will get through summary judgment, lickety-split, I believe, and on to trial, trial by jury. The list of causes of action include intentional infliction of severe emotional distress because you have prior knowledge of our disabilities and you continue to do things to exacerbate our symptoms. There's intentionally creating a financial undue hardship, creating an undue burden, discrimination, invasion of privacy issues, failure to provide a reasonable accommodation, intentionally creating adverse effects on the disabled. And as you know, punitive damages may be awarded for distress that is caused intentionally or negligently. Now, who do you think a jury's gonna be sympathetic to? The elderly, disabled, disabled veterans who cannot afford the prices at the dispensaries for their medication, or to the other side? I cut out a lot of colorful language right there, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The punitive damages alone will bankrupt Yountville. I think the best alternative for all of us is to put forth a good faith effort to reach a reasonable accommodation. And that would be to allow no more than six plants to each cardholder. Now, you have to ask yourself, how do you want the world to view Yountville? As a highly intelligent, forward-moving, progressive, compassionate place to visit? Or the opposite?
Thank you.
And again, I cut out a lot of colorful language.
Thank you. And what I'll encourage you to, actually, the last meeting that you didn't attend, we updated positions. We can't really get into the dialogue here, but I encourage you to go on our website, or I'll even invite staff to send an email to link that meeting's conversation and new direction. So, I don't know, Steve, you got anything further to invite?
Well, just briefly.
Because we can't get into a dialogue on it, but just to clarify.
No, just briefly, the council is continuing, and the direction of the council was to further explore and learn more information about the nuances. So, the emergency ordinance was because of a timeline requirement by state law that has since been changed, but that was the emergency, not orders or anything. I do want to remind that the Public Information Workshop on Medical Marijuana will be on April 19th, so you'll want to make sure you're here, but the council's asked for some additional information related to medical marijuana and growing. And that will be scheduled for the April 19th council meeting.
Yeah, and you could go on our town website and get caught up on the discussion we had at our last meeting. I think it'll clarify some of the points you brought up.
Great, okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you keeping within your time limit and within proper decorum.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And actually, Julie, did you need his name for the... Yeah, yeah, okay. Yes, welcome.
My name's Steve Mercer. I moved here five years ago. We retired here from Davis. My wife is a clinical psychologist. I'm a registered nurse since 1978. Two and a half years ago, on a Thanksgiving morning, my wife had a stroke in her spinal cord. She went from being a clinical psychologist to a 10th grader overnight, based on the medication they were giving her to control the pain. She was on seven or eight different meds for nerve pain, for spasms, for everything. She was in the hospital for two months. She's home now. About six months ago, someone suggested trying medical marijuana. We got a medical marijuana card for her. I started making brownies for her. She has reduced her pain medications, her nerve medications, by half, based on medical marijuana. I think you should know there's another side to marijuana besides the drug part of it. It is a medicine. It is helpful to many, many people. And I think you should consider that when you make a law. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just also repeat my encouragement that you...
I will be there.
And also, just to brief yourself on our discussion that we had just a couple weeks ago, I think you'll find that enlightening. And also, April 19th, do we have a time on that meeting, or the workshop, Steve?
It'll be early in the council meeting.
Okay. So sometime after 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll move on to our two consent calendar items. I understand from Councilmember Muller, she'd like to pull item 6A for comment before voting. So let's, is there a motion for item 6B?
I'll move to approve item 6B, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that was unanimous?
Yes, I'm sorry.
6A, Councilmember Muller?
I just wanted, I just didn't want to, I wanted to pull it just for a separate vote.
Right, okay. So, is there a motion for item 6A?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6A from the consent calendar.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that's a four-to-one vote. And both of those consent calendar items are passed. We'll move on to our presentation for tonight. Napa Countywide Pedestrian Plan Draft Presentation. Yes.
Is it possible for the public to get a copy of the agenda?
It's right, there's some right there.
Yep. Right on the wall. I should've told you that ahead of time. With that, Danielle, we can, oh, actually, we'll start with the staff part, and then we'll invite Danielle up.
Yeah, let me just do a quick introduction. As many of you know, the Napa Valley Transit Authority, NVTA, they've contracted with the consulting firm, Farr &amp; Pierce, to draft a Napa Countywide Pedestrian Plan. The materials have been available for review. They're attached to your council packet. These documents included countywide introduction to the plan, section specifically on Yountville, as well as appendices associated with the Yountville Plan. Now, members from the consulting firm Farr &amp; Pierce, as well as representatives from NVTA, have been visiting each jurisdiction's council meetings throughout the last several weeks. And now, I just want to pass the time over to Danielle. So, there's a mouse right here.
All right.
There we go.
Welcome.
Hi. I think I know the majority of you, but for those of you that do not know me, my name is Danielle Schmitz, and I am the Planning Manager at the newly coined Napa Valley Transportation Authority, NVTA. Diana Meehan is our Active Transportation Coordinator. She's here as well to field any questions, because she's a little bit more versed with active transportation over me. But, why are we doing a pedestrian plan? Because we've received that question. So, as the countywide transportation planners for Napa County, we've been very focused on bicycle planning for the last several years. We have a countywide bicycle plan that we've updated several times. We have the Bicycle Advisory Committee, which is made up of each of the jurisdictions of Napa County. We have a representative on. And it has been more and more evident from the federal, the state, and the regional level that we put more focus on other forms of active transportation, in particular pedestrian. And we feel that the pedestrian element of this plan will really help us create a full active transportation plan. It is also, in our Vision 2040 Moving Napa Forward, which is our countywide, our long-range countywide transportation plan, it is a goal of ours to increase non-auto mode share, as well as a regional goal. So, you know, this plan is another step towards meeting that goal. As mentioned before, we are now NVTA, and we've worked extensively with the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and also our Technical Advisory Committee. So it's made up of public works and planning staff from each of the jurisdictions on this plan. So we've worked in concert with our TAC and the Farr &amp; Pierce, and now we have a draft plan that we're circulating for public comment and review. So kind of a roadmap of what I'm gonna go over today, the plan structure, the planning process, and the outcomes. And the actual plan itself is unique, because the first chapter and the last chapter are countywide chapters. So the first chapter, we have existing inventory, kind of an introduction. And then the last chapter, we have outcomes, policies and programs, benchmarking, information that can be adopted by each jurisdiction. But the meat of the document is really chapters two through seven. Chapter four is the Yountville Plan. So if you're reviewing the plan, I would recommend reading chapter one, and then chapter four, and then chapter eight, and then also the Yountville Appendix. Some countywide goals of the whole plan are to increase walking trips, and this is not just walking trips in general, but walking trips to transit and other mode of transportation other than a single occupancy vehicle, to identify funding. And so, we looked at funding not only for development fees, but also looking at synergies with other infrastructure projects, and ways that a pedestrian project could also be incorporated in that infrastructure project and be funded. Also, safe routes education, and that's not just safe routes to school, but safe routes for seniors, safe routes for transit. So, this includes outreach to senior centers, education and encouragement, and also working with the transit providers. In the plan, for each jurisdiction, we have a benchmarking table, and the benchmarking table has taken best practices, policies, and programs throughout the nation. And they've evaluated the best practices, programs, and policies of each of our jurisdictions. So for the town of Yountville, they evaluated them against the national best practice standards and assigned a category, either key strength, potential enhancement area, or an opportunity area. And this is really meant for jurisdictions to use as best practice examples and topics such as complete streets, traffic calming, pedestrian safety and enforcement, and data collection. So it's really kind of like a tool for the toolkit to use for each of the jurisdictions. We used a data-driven approach, so we not only did existing pedestrian facility or inventory within each of the jurisdictions. If a jurisdiction didn't have a GIS layer, we actually created one for them. But we also looked at SWITTER's data, which is the statewide collision data, and looked at pedestrian, or collisions involving pedestrians. And then we also created heat maps for potential demand. And this really looks at origin and destination, so maybe shopping centers or retail centers would be key origins for pedestrians, or key destinations for pedestrians. Origins would be things like residential communities. And we looked at population density, and we overlaid it with a map. And so this created a heat map of high potential pedestrian demand areas. Yountville, being very walkable and very compact, as you imagine, is very high, has a very high pedestrian demand. We did a public, extensive public input process, so we went all the way up from Calistoga down to American Canyon and held public workshops. We had big maps allowing participants to put sticky notes and post-its on the maps to say, you know, "I walk from this point, point A to point B every day with my kids," or "I would like to walk here, but I don't for X, Y, and Z reason." And this really helped with some of our post-processing data. So we also had web map comments, where people could go onto our web tool, drop a pin, and say, "I would like to walk here more, but I feel that the speeds are too high, and there's not a pedestrian infrastructure for me to feel safe on." And so, the workshop comments and the web map comments, we combined those, and we took out all the safety-related comments, and that's what you see in the perceived barriers map. And so, this is really important with pedestrian planning, because a lot of times, the statewide data on pedestrian accidents doesn't tell the whole story. Because just because a street or something doesn't have an accident, doesn't mean that it's completely safe for pedestrians and everybody's walking down it. It might mean that somebody would like to walk there, but they can't, because they have this perceived barrier. So, that's a really important map when you're looking at pedestrian planning. And all this post-processing data really laid out the work of where we decided to do our walking audits. So Farr &amp; Pierce, our consultant on this project, as well as NVTA staff, Diana herself, went out into the field and did some walking audits. This was a time that our consultants really got face-to-face also with other members, stakeholders from each of the communities, some elected officials, law enforcement, as well as some, like, school staff in some jurisdictions came out and walked with them. They really got to feel the lay of the land to see what kind of pedestrian facilities and infrastructure was there, and then maybe what could be improved upon. And out of this is where our pedestrian improvement list came. So in each jurisdiction, we have a list of projects that are pedestrian improvements, and we've tiered them from tier zero to tier three. Tier zero projects are projects that are currently happening in each of the jurisdictions. And then tier one are kind of key projects. And what we are able to do now is that our consultants have done cost estimates on some of the key projects within each jurisdiction, which have provided the projects to be more ready for things like grants, so more grant-ready, because we're doing cost estimates, and then we're gonna be kicking off our environmental, and our environmental review of the plan at the end of this month. And so, we're really hoping that that makes these key projects more attractive to grant cycles coming up in future years. We also have a complementary programs and funding element for each of the jurisdictions, and then there's some countywide overarching programs. And some of these programs, like the Countywide Count Evaluation Program, which was recommended by our consultants that we implement, NVTA will actually be implementing annually. So we did some data collection. We did pedestrian counts and bicycle counts to help with this plan, and we actually will be implementing those counts every year. The school site walk audits are something that the consultants also recommended, so this would be actually going out to one or two school sites a year, and doing an extensive school site walk audit, maybe working with the parents of the school, school staff, law enforcement, students, and really doing focused, a focused site visit to see what best infrastructure needs to be implemented to promote walking. So with that, oh, the best practices toolkit is also in chapter eight, and this is just really a treatment glossary, and as mentioned before, it's tools for the toolkit. So each jurisdiction has the option to adopt these guidelines for themselves, but it really gives best practices for sidewalk zones and corners, pedestrian wayfinding, pedestrian scale lighting, street furniture, bus stop accessibility, and such. And so, right now, as mentioned before, we're in our draft stage. We're asking for public comments back throughout the environmental phase. We are asking each jurisdiction to provide us comments back, major comments back on the specific projects in the plan by the end of next week. I did talk to Nathan about that. But we are open for public comment until the plan is adopted, or the environmental document is released and then adopted, probably around June timeframe. So with that, I'll be open for any comments or questions, or if you guys can think of something later, you're welcome to email me or call me.
Well, that was my first question. How should the public respond if they do have questions or comments?
So, we have a whole webpage oriented towards the pedestrian plan on our website, and they can either email myself or Diana, our email addresses are on there, or just the general NVTA web address, or call us. But I'm hoping that you guys will put your draft plan also on your website.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Great. Thank you for calling out the specific jurisdictional plans. It helps going through the hundreds of pages.
Four hundred pages, not fun, but yeah, it's doable when it's just the Yountville plan.
Yes, thanks. Questions from council? Vice Mayor and I have seen some of this presentation before on the board. Vice Mayor?
Can you talk just a little bit about how you're gonna go from this plan, if you will, to ultimately where we're gonna go solicit and find funding? Are you gonna go to the agencies and look for money for these kinds of, because you've got this priority list of things that are being recommended or at least suggested?
Right. So a lot of times, with a lot of federal funding and state funding that we get, we have to have a project in a plan. It has to be identified in a plan already. So, you know, for the Active Transportation Program, which we have actually been successful the last couple rounds with the getting vine trail funding for, they are asking that a project be in an active transportation plan. Right now, it's only projects of a million or more, but that's not to say coming, you know, in the future, it's gonna be all your pedestrian or bicycle projects need to be in your active transportation plan. It's kind of the progression that we see things. So this is really just setting up your key projects that you've identified to be grant-ready, so to apply for ATP, the Active Transportation Program funding, or for transportation funding for Clean Air, or, you know, other Transportation Development Act funding.
Right. And then just one other question, maybe this is of staff. Have we gone and used this current document and reviewed it in the context of our current circulation plan?
Yeah, this has gone through several revisions of it, and again, this is a time now where not only is the public gonna be commenting on this public draft, but staff also will be revising, will be going over it several times to make sure it is consistent with already adopted council policies, and we're gonna do our best to make sure there's nothing in there that seems inconsistent.
Yeah, so in your individual plan, we actually have your circulation element policies pulled out that are pedestrian-oriented.
Right, okay.
So it's done in concert. So at the end of the day, the idea would be, you know, come June or July, this council, the town council would say, you know, "We're approving or we're adopting our countywide, or our Yountville pedestrian plan, which is part of the larger countywide pedestrian plan." And then at your next, you know, time that you update your circulation element, if there's some kind of consistency that needs to be made, you could do so. But it should be consistent, because we've been working in concert with your staff.
Good. Thank you.
I have a follow-up to Vice Mayor's question about funding. Will jurisdictions be able to potentially combine projects that would not normally qualify for a threshold?
Yes, that's actually really, we've talked about that in past cycles of the ATP program. So some of the smaller jurisdictions, let's say, St. Helena, Yountville, and Calistoga, you have all, some sort of pedestrian program, but you're cobbling together maybe like ADA ramps or something that are under a certain threshold, but then all together, you guys can apply for something that's $300,000 or $400,000. So that is something that we are looking into exploring.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much, Danielle. Any member of the public like to comment on the public plan, draft plan?
Yes, the draft plan. So we'll be back in probably September, July or September.
Hopefully, you'll be hearing from folks between now and June.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay, we're gonna move, good night, Julie. We're going to move on to our first of two administrative items, budget adjustment request for one of our capital projects, one of our favorite capital projects.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you for your review and approval, a request to increase appropriations from the Capital Projects Fund balance to add $360,000 to DF004, for a total project budget of $3,566,000, and authorizing the town manager to sign the construction contract change orders and amendments up to the budgeted amount. As you know, the town has been undergoing a variety of flood control projects, actually four, in combined to create one project here in town. Since 1940, significant floods have occurred at least 13 times in town, and in response to these concerns, the town constructed two major flood control projects, including the one we are currently undergoing, and also the project, the Flood Wall, to reduce the impact from Napa River flooding. Two studies were completed for the Copper Creek Flood Improvements Project, and as a result of those, a design was initiated, and the project was approved and is under construction. On June 16th, 2015, the council awarded the contract to Argonaut Constructors for the construction of the Hopper Creek Improvement Project. It included the four separate flood control projects, so the one adjacent to the French Landry Gardens, the one that is known as the Velagio Channel, the project at Oak Circle and Heather, and the project that is constructing the three 36-inch storm drains and some additional flood control, flood improvement projects on Fennel. The project is nearing completion and has required change orders beyond the approved budget. Many of the additional expenses are due to an extended construction schedule caused by delays of PG&E in relocating these facilities. Initially, PG&E had committed to finishing this project, their parts of the project, in early July, based on their assurances. We left the contract and were expecting them to be complete by July 5th of 2015. However, they did not meet their schedule and performed the relocations in phases instead, with the final relocation being completed on March 2nd, 2016. The revised project completion date is May 19th, 2016, and can be extended by wet weather. The delays resulted in the extended project inspection, management, and administrative costs. In addition, they also pushed major excavation work into the wet weather, which required paying for disposal of excess soil instead of the free disposal that had been secured by the contractor, had it been allowed to proceed in the normal timeframe. And another unexpected condition was the discovery of water and fish in Velagio Channel. The water had to be, we had to de-water the ditch and also relocate the fish per our agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. It did require an amendment to the permit, and of course, the regulatory permits did take a little bit of time to secure. The project is included in adoption of the 2015 to 2019 Capital Improvement Project and is funded by Measure A. The total project cost for this project was estimated to be $3.206 million. And as I said, the revised current total project cost is estimated to be $3,566,000. The original cost estimate did include $251,850 in construction contingencies, and with change orders that we have approved to date is $449,500. This does include an increase of $110,000 in construction management and inspection services, due solely to the extension of the contract because of the delays caused by PG&E. It is recommended that the council adopt the budget adjustment increase from the Capital Projects Fund to add $360,000 to DF004, for a new 2015-16 total project budget of $3,566,000, and authorizing the town manager to sign the construction contract change orders and amendments up to the budget amount. The cost increases to the project will be submitted to the Napa County Flood Control Protection and Watershed Improvement Authority for determination of eligibility for Measure A reimbursement and inclusion in the Measure A funding agreement. The proposed claims for the Measure A reimbursement are projected to exceed the funds available for 2015-16, and an inter-fund loan from Fund 50 will be established to fund this need. We will, the town will request reimbursement of all approved project costs We will, the town will request reimbursement of all approved project costs with the understanding that some reimbursements will be deferred until 2016 and possibly 2017-18, depending on the timing and amounts of the Measure A sales tax revenue. We're asking you to approve the request, increase in budget amount, and authorize the town manager to sign the contract documents. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I have two questions, and one is that I was under the impression that the project management was in-house, that it was your department that was overseeing this project.
No, ma'am. Our, this project is extremely complex, and it typically, projects that have this kind of complexity and duration are managed by an outside consultant and supported by in-house staff, and that's, that's what this project is.
And my second question is, is there any recourse to hit PG&E to compensate for some of the overruns, cost overruns that they have created through their lack of getting their project done?
That's an interesting question, and I will tell you that in the last few meetings we've had on PG&E's side, that their claims, there's, there has been a claims person at each meeting, so I, I think they anticipate us filing claims and discussions with the town manager and town council. We anticipate filing a claim to see where we can maybe get some of this money back, if that's possible.
Good, thank you.
That's gonna be the direction that I'm going to strongly recommend our staff take. Vice Mayor?
So, and thank you for this. It's, it's about as clear as mud with regards to these changes that are happening. I guess the question, or maybe the short answer to all this, is the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars we're requesting to push into this fiscal year, is it a timing issue of what we expect to be fully reimbursed through Measure A? Are we, as it's presented here, actually exceeding what our allowable amounts through Measure A are?
You are correct. Measure A is like a, we have a little piggy bank, if you will, that we've been banking money for this project. We have several more years of Measure A that will be collected, so we will get reimbursed. This is an approved project. We've already consulted. If you may recall, the council was advised of the potential for this based on cash flow and timing when we entered into the project, that a short-term inner, inner loan fund may be necessary. So, at this point, we're fairly confident that it will be. We're very confident that we will be able to return the funds to the Capital Projects Fund before Measure A sunsets.
To answer the Vice Mayor's question, this project has now exceeded the costs agreed to during the July contract during the award of the bid, so we've exceeded that, and contingency. So, this, this request will include the costs that we anticipate incurring and those costs that were included in the original contract.
By ten percent?
By, we've exceeded the ten percent already. So, this will include that ten percent plus the additional costs we anticipate incurring to the end of the project.
Okay.
Did that clear up the mind?
It's now silt.
Yeah.
Other questions? To follow up on that, how much of the three sixty is, you say, most or all of that is PG&E's failure to deliver, or is some of that based on real change orders that happen, that often happen on a project of this magnitude?
Sure, some of those are, are real change orders that happen during the course of a normal project. We would say at least one-third to forty, forty percent are incurred by, from PG&E. So, to give you an example of some of the costs that we incurred that were unforeseeable, de-watering the ditch and having to transfer the mosquito fish to the Napa River was a cost that was unforeseeable in dry weather, but when we got pushed to wetter, wetter, weather, the trench, the ditch became swampy, and we had to de-water to continue with the work. So, some of the claim is gonna be based on some of the timing, but there are definitely costs that were unforeseeable, as with most construction projects. Another great example, excuse me, another great example is the fencing that we placed along Oak Circle and Heather. That wasn't included in the original scope of the project, however, once the town manager and I recognized that there were, there was some risk with the steepness of the slope and, and the way that the sedimentation basins have been excavated, we thought that it would be a good alternative to install that fencing as a protection against somebody sliding in there. So, that's kind of one of those typical costs that incur in a project, not foreseeable, but definitely needed to help us was manage some of the unforeseen parts of the project.
So, when a claim is filed, and a claim is going to be filed, as far as I'm concerned, we'll have all those elements itemized as to PG&E's responsibility. What I also am wondering is PG&E's failure to act in a timely and a quality manner along Vista Drive with some of those unfinished elements that were technically not related to this flood project, but absolutely their responsibility that went unfinished for months. I don't want us to forget, just because it's not part of this Hopper Creek flood project, that that's part of their, I think that's part of their responsibility for either covering any delay costs that we may have had.
I think, I certainly understand the frustration of the mayor, the council, and staff. That was a PG&E-funded project itself, so other than it being a foot noted, I don't know if we could overlap it. It's maybe hard for us to put a dollar.
So, they're, they're just allowed to not finish a project for four months and leave the street and disrepair, and then we have no recourse?
I'm not saying that. I'm just suggesting that when we put a claim together, we, we're gonna need to be really clear and focused, and as Public Works Director was indicating, we do believe that there are some very clear costs that are defined, you know, the additional project oversight, administration, changed conditions, wet soil, hauling, because I want to remind everybody, this project, based on PG&E's commitment, was anticipated to be concluded at the end of October, early November of 2016.
Who's been responsible, is it Argonaut or PG&E, for the trenching, the temporary fill of the trenching along Fennel?
It's that, that, those trenches that you're speaking about specifically are PG&E-related trenches.
That's not a cost issue because it's not a cost issue. It's a horrible quality of work issue that needs to be noted. I don't know that there's anything other than satisfaction to maybe achieve.
There will be, when we put the information together, they, I mean, one of our frustrations is that PG&E relocated something and then had to come back and re-relocate it, because they relocated it wrong. So, we get that, but I'm just, I'm, we will do what we can do. I don't want to overpromise on something that, like this, because what I will tell you is regulating PG&E and dealing with it is not, you know, we're, there's a process, and, and we will go through that process, but it's not easy. And it's very frustrating when they operate in the manner in which they have.
If, if we need to make this a loud statement, I'm ready to make that loud statement, just so you know.
I think you already have made it a loud statement.
Not yet. I haven't. Okay, the other question I had is, as it relates to Measure A, are we concerned that having to carry over the three sixty is going to impact any other projects that are Measure A-funded in the next cycle or two?
No, again, I want to, that's a very good question, but I want to remind the council. When we made the decision to combine these things, we basically said this was going to be our last significant project, and then we would reconcile our Measure A account, anticipating that most of the remaining funds will go into a maintenance reserve fund to be used for the flood wall, the weirs, and the various structures that we've built over time.
And I would say to add what, to what the town manager has already stated, the flood wall loan payback was in an earlier amendment, so that's unaffected by this current request for additional funding. The, the sole project that is now under consideration for, from the Measure A oversight is, in fact, this project that's ongoing, and it is the only project that we have planned for Measure A funds. So, as the town manager stated, we will have hopefully a fund balance to maintain these projects going into the future.
I'm anticipating a likely, and this is a conservative estimate at this point, that when we finish this project, apply the yet-to-be-earned Measure A sales tax proceeds, that we will close out Measure A with probably in the neighborhood of three hundred to four hundred and fifty balance. That's my conservative estimate.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, question staff?
A quick question, and I don't want it, I, I agree with your, your points, and, but was it not brought up in past meetings that we lost a lot of time at the beginning because of what transpired in Lake County?
I can't speak for PG&E, so that's the first thing I'm going to say. PG&E has had a lot of reasons for why they weren't timely, and I'll let PG&E explain why they weren't timely rather than, but we've heard that.
And the reason I ask is, I just don't want, I understand that we have a right to a claim, I just don't, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of ti, I don't want a lot of time and effort spent on it, knowing that these things had happened, so therefore, we know we can get something, but we're not necessarily gonna get all the money.
Right, I think it's, I think we are now duty-bound, and I think we agreed to this before this meeting, that we were going to pursue a claim, and hopefully, they will recognize that they had some duty to respond to us in a timely manner, and we can settle it in a fairly straightforward fashion. I'm not sure what the claims process is.
And, but it also sounds as if we need, as a town, as a town, to be more diligent when dealing with PG&E in the future, is that, given the mayor's comments about past work as well. Is that not correct?
Well, I think you have to understand, when the agency gives you a letter that says they'll be out of the way by July 1st, you take that at that, you know, prior notice, that this is not something that snuck up on PG&E. We've been working with them. This is a similar concern, that if you talk to most of your elected officials and all of your other communities, it's very frustrating working with PG&E. I personally have been involved with a project where, in a prior agency, we gave them three years, and they still didn't relocate the utilities timely. It really comes down, unfortunately, in my opinion, it almost seems like you have to create an emergency for them to respond, and the political. One thing that I just want to caution everybody on the Lake County situation, Lake County was a fire. The facilities burned, were above ground. We are a underground utility project, so they were not the same crews, but we won't get into, again, this is really the communications and the expectation. We further worked with them, and after the July 1st, they still gave us an October 31 concurrence, and we still worked. We continue to work with them. We've incurred some additional costs in potholing and research that, based on our franchise agreement, we're not supposed to. The only thing I will tell you is that when you're dealing with people's gas and electric power sources, one, they're very dangerous, so you don't do work without the proper precautions and the right technical staff, but it's very challenging at times to work with PG&E. And I think you will find that that comment is, is echoed by most of the public works directors in town. I will say this, our government affairs representatives and the regional manager, we've met, they're been made aware of some concerns, we shared with them some communications. We're trying to work on a process to improve communications flow, so that, you know, but the question is, at what point, how much time do you need to give them, and what's a reasonable expectation?
Any other questions from council staff? Any member of the public like to comment? Seeing none, any additional comment before action is considered? I think I've made my point. I won't get started on how they trim the trees around their utility lines. That'll really extend the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3329, approving budget adjustment number 2016-16-01, increasing appropriations from the Capital Projects Fund balance, five, fifty dash zero 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 dash twenty-nine hundred for the Hopper Creek Improvement Project, DF-0004, DF-0007, DF-0008, and DF-0009, by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a new project budget of three million five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and authorizing the town manager to sign the construction contract change orders and amendments up to the budget amount.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That was a long resolution.
It's three and a half million dollars worth of resolution.
It was only three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but it was a long one to read.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I'll just ask either Steve or Joe, what timing would you anticipate us having some kind of letter to file?
I, I think we want to do a little more work on what the process is, and, and then work on that, and then come back to you.
Okay. I appreciate that, as, as efficiently as appropriate.
We've, we've heard you.
Okay, thank you. Our next administrative item, consideration of establishing a utility rate ad hoc committee.
Yes, very briefly, as the council knows, every five years, we do a utility rate review. This is governed under both the premises of Proposition 218, which governs the notification and process for public review of utilities. We did this last, for the last rate increase, and we also had a council ad hoc committee. Your direction during the budget was to give a one-year break and then resume it, so we're under contract with Bartle Wells, which is the same firm we use. So, the recommendation that we have is for the council to consider an ad hoc committee, and then to look at further direction as you may go forward with the process for moving forward with recommendations based on the information that the consultant will bring forward.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? And who is on that ad hoc committee?
Louis and I.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, is, so the contract, it's, it's thirty-nine thousand dollars is what's being proposed for this next review?
No, no, the contract's already paid for and entered into. They've started.
So, it's already been executed, okay. Okay. And this, all of this budget, then, I guess, obviously, we approved it at the beginning of this year, so it's not like there's anything different.
Right.
So, really, what you're looking for action from us for is to determine whether or not we want an ad hoc committee.
Well, and our, because typically, like we say, we've discussed, the first thing that they will be doing is, they're analyzing a whole lot of information that staff is giving them, and then they will come back and educate and share with us. They'll, they'll have some additional questions for staff, and they'll have some trends based on the information. And in this particular year, we're also gonna have to review, as you know, you've had a briefing before by the town attorney on the Capistrano case, and we need to, so there will need to be some modifications in part of our consumption to be fully compliant with that. Very fortunately, the town moved to a mod, a rate structure that has put us in, in good shape, because as you know, we have, for our system, we have system access fees, which are fixed fees, so we're not suffering like many agencies are, where they have everything loaded on consumption. Then we have a system replacement fee, and we have a, an actual consumption.
I think before we get any further into the details, you're just asking for an ad hoc committee tonight.
Well, I'm, yes, because typically, or if you don't want one, or if you want to do something different, but the question would be, at some point, the council had indicated that that was a process that they would like to probably continue.
Right, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna have that conversation right now. I certainly think it makes sense to have an ad hoc committee. Yeah, Councilmember Durham?
A, as do I, and it was brought up to me today that possibly, and as the newest person, I do not know all the dynamics of Prop 218 and all the other dynamics, but it was brought up to me that possibly a town's person to be a part of the ad hoc committee as well. So, I'd like to make that suggestion, and possibly for those who are up here, who were on the, on the ad hoc committee before, might be better to speak to that, but that's a suggestion that was made as well.
What, what I would say to speak to that, and I'll, Councilmember Mueller, follow up on this, is tonight, we were talking about our representation on that committee, and then I think that the two people that are identified can work with staff and determine if that's appropriate, if there's maybe either a voting or a non-voting position.
Very good.
For, for that type of thing. Senator Mueller?
Well, I, I just wanted to follow on that comment. I think it's really great if we could really have actually more inclusion of the public. This is an open meeting. I think I would love to see any amount of public, not just limited to one, to try to maybe really announce it on. really announce it on Speak Up Yountville, or put it on our website, to get more people to come to really understand the process and bring timely public comment while we, while we go through it. So, just briefly, for, I, I certainly will volunteer myself to be on the ad hoc committee, but for anybody else who might be so inclined, or would also like to throw their name in, as Steve mentioned, a lot of data kind of goes to this consultant right now, and, you know, that really includes, you know, we do, you know, what has really cost us from the Veterans Home in the past for water, each one of these are enterprise funds, and then what the capital costs, we have to project as a little bit of a guesswork. And so then basically, we put them into, it's kind of a fancy Excel program, so we run a lot of iterations to really kind of smooth out the numbers, so, because we're not allowed to make money, even though in the past, we've lost money, we've made up for that, so it's kind of, each one of these enterprise funds is a net zero fund, so that's why I would really encourage as much public to come, just to see how it's really done and understand all the processes, like, because once we set these rates, they all go out to the public for approval by Prop 218, again, which is, the state, if they decide that you don't have a public process, they force you to have a public process, so that's why we have Prop 218, so.
And I'm sure that there'll be plenty of public meeting opportunity, whether we have members of the public on this ad hoc committee. You create a logjam if you get too many people on an initial committee that's actually supposed to be collecting the data and presenting it for consideration. I know our representatives from the Napa Valley Transportation Authority are gone now, but if they had had initial, all-inclusive conversations with their consultant, I'm not sure they would have ever received a countywide transportation plan. But I was originally going to recommend the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mueller, unless there are others that want to offer their, or deny that recommendation, either way. Councilmember Dornbeck, your thoughts?
I just am overcommitted at this time, so I cannot volunteer, but I think those are two excellent choices.
Councilmember Durham, your thoughts?
As long as he talks about it at the meetings, I'll be happy.
I do have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So in general, are we talking about not just forming this committee out of the two members from the council, which is some of the committees we've had in the past, but we're anticipating we'd have members of the public as part of the committee as well? Is that what we're deciding, or?
Well, I think what we can do is, I think a good discussion would be to have the ad hoc committee meet with staff, we can agendize and look at level of public process, because what I will say, some committees, or some communities, excuse me, have included and recruited some public members, so it's not uncommon that there might be a, a public level, and what, you know, if you want two or three members, I think that can be one of our early discussions on that. I also want to point out that this committee is not necessarily gonna, you know, several of the initial meetings will be information sharing and gathering, and then recommendations, you're probably looking at maybe six meetings over the course, and, and none of those will be right away, other than the, obviously, if you guys want to discuss the public process, then we could do that, and, because obviously, we would want to recruit, because I would say, those that have typically had a, a public process, they've been formal, similar to the Go Green team, where they have a mission so that they know that they're supposed to be involved in helping to vet and understand and participate in that recommendation, so that would be a topic for the ad hoc committee to discuss.
Well, and I think, if I understand what's being suggested by the other council members, and I'm, I'm supportive of that, is that this, four or five years ago, when we implemented the first restructure of the rating, was such a hot topic, and the community involvement, whether or not we all are making specific direct decisions or guidance, at least help share the message, or if you will, the burden of what's actually being proposed and agreed to by the town council. So, I mean, I think that's what is being presented, and I, I, I support that, so.
And I would also think that this group will be, the, the challenge will be less daunting than it was five years ago.
Yes, I would, I would hope that would be the case.
So I'll formalize, Councilmember Dornbeck, or do you have?
I just wondered if we needed a motion.
Yeah, I was going to formalize the motion to appoint Vice Mayor Hall and Councilmember Mueller to the ad hoc committee. That's my motion, then with the ad hoc committee and staff, as, as the town manager recommended, you decide the rest of the membership, if it's appropriate immediately, or if it's appropriate further down the process, but those would be my recommendations from the council.
And so is that a, a motion?
The formal motion.
Oh, I second it.
Any further discussion? Request to have your names removed?
No, I'll even second it.
Aye.
That's already, Councilmember Dornbeck already seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so Vice Mayor Hall, Councilmember Mueller will be our ad hoc representatives.
Spreadsheet contest.
That's right. Thank you very much for your volunteerism on that.
It's all electronic.
Next up, staff informational reports, we've got four listed. Let's start with water conservation update.
All right, thank you very much. I will try to make this pretty quick, so, happy to, happy to report that for the month of February, we are at 28.05% reduction as compared to the previous same month in 2013, which is the benchmark for the state. As you will, as you might notice, water consumption was up a little bit, so, it wasn't down as much as previous months, mostly because February was exceptionally warm. I would expect that when we get this month's, this month's report, it will be similar to January. So, the good news is, we're still well ahead of where we wanted to be, and our goal of being at 20% for the year, we're still well ahead of that, and it looks like with this wet march, we'll continue that. We will also probably, at some point in the not-too-distant future, be bringing forward a request to continue the conservation measures that we have implemented until the governor declares the, the need for conservation and, and this, this method that we're currently in, no, no longer necessary.
And just a clarification on that, I want everybody to remember that while we may be locally full at Rector Reservoir, there's still statewide a lot of concern. Also, the groundwater aquifers need to recharge, and I also need to remind everybody, we do need to pay attention to what the governor says with his directions on water conservation, because we purchase our water from the state.
And there's still a Level 2 at the state level?
Level 2.
Level 2?
Yep.
Okay, any questions about that update? Community Park and Oak Circle Park updates?
Happy to announce that the parks with this good weather are back on, back on site. We'll talk about Yountville Community Park first. The picture on your left is, is a picture of the path, the areas are being planted. The picture, the picture on your right is similar, is a similar setting. What I think is important to note is that the, the streetlights have, or the park lights have been installed as of late last night and early today. The town manager and I were looking, taking a tour down there earlier today, and they were busy offhauling some of the old lights, which we will find the use for in the corporation yard, we think. The terrapave surface is scheduled to be installed this week. The new fence is also, materials were being unloaded as we were out, so I imagine the new fence that runs along parallel to Washington will be installed this week as well. We anticipate punch lists and a few items, including the bridge, to be installed next week, with the Easter bag hunt being the premier event for that park. We anticipate the park being open to all patrons and all access to all areas of the park.
Joe, did you have one of the updated pictures showing the new, those are not, I thought we took some pictures with the, there they are.
There they are.
The new street, the, the Vandeleer Park-style lights, and some better pictures of the landscaping?
Well, you see on the left side is that Vandeleer-style park light, it's kind of hidden there by the, by the redwood trees. And on the right, we, we wanted to not only point out the, the, the new light at the, at that area, but also the piece of path that has now been removed. It was, that was, I believe there were pavers up there, and now it's been poured back to sidewalk. So those lights, as we, as the town manager mentioned, have been installed, and we are well on our way to getting that park back open and, and back into programming for people who have been anxiously awaiting the reopening of that park.
So the first slide you had, what looked like gravel area is actually the undersurface where the terrapave is going.
That's correct, and I think what we wanted to note in this picture, which this picture was taken earlier this week, is how well it drained, considering all the rain we've had. That drainage is, is performing remarkably well, and it really gives us a kind of a good sign of, of how we can expect the drainage to be managed when the permanent surface is installed on top of that gravel.
Great, any questions? Thank you for that update.
I would also, one more thing, I think, for those of you who are concerned about the redwood trees, it seems like we did some deep root treating, deep root treatment earlier this fall, late winter, to them, and now with the additional rain, it seems like the redwood trees are kind of responding well, and it looks like they're on their way to being healthy again, so that's, our fingers are crossed for that. I just wanted to add that, for those of you who are interested in the redwood trees.
And Oak Circle?
Oak Circle Park, they're, 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 they have about 30% of the park path poured. They're gonna pour another portion of the park path this week. It's a little muddy out there, so they're definitely fighting that, that mud.
You went ahead, that's the?
The back one. Keep going.
You went to Hopper Creek.
Keep going.
The Hopper Creek project.
Keep going back.
Oh, you're ruining all the surprise.
You went to Hopper Creek. So, no, Oak Circle was in.
I need to go back into the Park Project one.
We lost that one.
Okay.
Anyway, that, the path is going to continue to be poured. We do have one additional, what we think is an important piece of information. We have decided to use a solar irrigation controller in Oak Circle Park. It eliminates the need for us to try to manage PG&E on yet another project, and not an insubstantial cost. Turns out that the cost of the solar controller and the solar panel are much cheaper than it would have cost us to have PG&E come in and relocate the power, so we're happy to be able to do that. The Go Green team will be celebrating that little piece of green infrastructure, and we're, we're excited to see how that's going to work and how that might work in other parks. Now we're on to Hopper Creek.
I know.
Maybe not. So Hopper Creek was delayed by the weather. However, they are back on site as of today. They're finishing up the 15-inch storm drain that runs parallel to the fencing, and the sidewalk will be, will be constructed on top of that storm drain. I think the, the important news of note for that storm drain installation is, in storms similar to the one that we had this past week or two, Harvest Court would have been, at least at the northern end of Harvest Court, would have had quite a bit of water holding in that, that court. With the installation of the storm drain, even as far as they got just a little past that area, they were able to manage that stormwater in a much better fashion, and as a result, I think the residents of Harvest Court were pleasantly surprised that the, the way the stormwater was being able to be handled in that new storm drain system. So tomorrow, they're going to start working on the manhole. The plan is to get the far southern piece of the 36-inch, the lone 36-inch up to the other two there by the oak tree. They have a bit of work to do to get underneath the 14-inch water line, and then they will, hopefully by the end of this week, or very early next week, finish installing those 36-inch storm drains into the Hopper Creek intake structure, so, and we are anticipating that. I would say, by our next meeting, we will have great pictures of the Hopper Creek project, at least the storm drain parts being complete.
But that's not a resurfacing of the street?
No, resurfacing the street's going to take a couple more weeks. They got to install the, the new sidewalk, that curb and gutter.
So the backfill, to this point, has been Argonaut's backfill?
Correct.
And they're going to be the ones that fix what PG&E has left in total mess?
In part. We're, we're trying to still hold PG&E's, PG&E's feet to the fire on, on some of the concrete work that's particularly at Girardi Place. However, we don't want to wait another four months for PG&E to come back and do some repairs, so we're going to try to get Argonaut to accomplish that as a part of their normal work.
Okay. Any questions, comments about Hopper Creek?
One quick thing, after, not this current storm, but the last storm, after Oak Circle came up a little bit, I just want to comment that your group was there Monday, and it was all clean by 10:00 AM, and they did an excellent job, so thank you.
And we'll pass that along to Larry Hancock and Muni Ops staff. Actually, both utility and Muni Ops teamed up to clean that up, and I, I think they did a phenomenal job, considering what a mess it was.
They did.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just two comments, and the first one is that, you know, I live on Mulberry Street, and I drive over Fennel, and seeing the amount of water that's been moving through there the last, you know, five or six days, it's remarkable how much water and how much rain we got, and actually, how little flooding it seemed like we got, even though the signs were up, so whatever we're doing seems to be working, even though we're not done yet, so applaud us for that. The second question is on the, on Fennel, yeah, on Fennel. The timing of the work that's being done and getting the, the lines underneath, will the sidewalks that are being proposed for what is the north side of Fennel?
South.
South side, pardon me. Will those be, when are, when are those anticipating being started and then completed?
As, I, I would anticipate that as soon as the, the Argonaut staff crew is done laying the 15-inch storm drain, they're going to start prepping, they're prepping the sidewalk subgrade right now, so they're going to try to get the sidewalk staff in and, and get those sidewalks set up and poured back as quick as possible. The project completion date calls for mid-May. I would expect that, given good weather, we're going to probably be, the end of April is more likely.
Okay. And I note that, I got an email that said that the Fennel was going to be closed except to local traffic Wednesday through Friday from 9 to 4?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We will be letting particularly 1901 and 1905, they're going to try to manage that, those two groups of people, so that it's less of an inconvenience to them. In the past, we've asked them to park in the Seventh Day Adventist parking lot, and we've worked out something with the pastor of the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which was very nice. However, Argonaut thinks they can manage a little bit different and, and not inconvenience them as much, so we're going to try to do that without asking them to park remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about, let's see, do we have one more? We do have, everybody's good on Hopper Creek, though? Okay. Employee Parking Management Program.
Well, good evening. We're excited to share with you the new employee parking policy that staff created to deal with the employee parking impacts in town, but most significantly in the residential, residential districts. And the policy is attached to the staff report, and it includes the registration of all employee vehicles, the payment of $50 fee per vehicle, and the issuance of a parking sticker to the employee to affix on their driver's side rear bumper, and then to have that employee park in an employee-designated zone. And the first goal of the program is to require that employees park in onsite parking lot of the business, and so during the entitlement stage for the use permit or the master development plan or amendment, we require that those employees park on site. And it requires work with the business owner and the property owner to designate this zone for employees, and it forces them to look at how to manage employees and guests onsite, instead of simply directing all employees to park in the neighborhoods. And the first business that we rolled this new program out to was JCB. They have six employees, they've been issued stickers, and they are parking on site on the west edge of the rear parking lot, and the program has not been without its challenges. We had some difficulty at the beginning to get those employees to get the stickers on their cars, but we now have them, and we have observed that they're parking in the lot. We had also thought that stacked parking was the best alternative for that rear lot, but we heard some feedback from one of the businesses back there that thought we would block their entrance, so we're, we're working through those issues as to what might fix an employee parking program, but create a program for another business, and we're being flexible. Let's see, so the, the first goal of the program is to park on site, but we realize that most of our businesses have already been developed, they have existing lots, and they only have so much room for expansion. So Hotel Yountville represents an opportunity to allow employees to park off-site, and as you know, we recent, you recently approved the expansion of the use to open facilities to the public, and they will be developing a parking lot south of Veterans Park for employees, and these employees- for employees, and these employees too will be issued stickers, and it'll be managed by staff. The good part of the program is that pulls employees, um, that were parking in front of the park and on Washington, to this employee parking zone where they can be monitored. We're also in the early stages of evaluating such an option at the north end of town at Yountville Community Park, where we may be able to get up to thirty-five spaces on the west side of the park. Um, and we know employees are parking in this zone already, um, but they aren't monitored. So, we're hoping by establishing this program that we'll get, um, better control over where employees are parking, and to limit them to this zone, because the goal is, um, first and foremost, to provide parking to guests of the park and not displace them, um, but also keep employees out of the neighborhood. And, and like I said, it, it's not without its challenges. It may be that on a busy weekend, um, an employee parking zone will be unavailable to, um, to guests of the park, uh, but we're hoping that this somehow addresses some of the impact of employee parking in town. The, um, it does have a significant, um, staff, um, impact, because unlike, um, a residential parking zone that can be, um, monitored by, um, parking police, and, um, it's for vehicles that don't have a sticker, this is the opposite. We're trying to identify vehicles with the sticker, um, and keeping track of those vehicles, which, um, is probably gonna be pretty difficult and take some, some time. Planning staff has one and a half employees that have desk jobs, so we are only occasionally monitoring these areas, and we're looking into options to have a better, um, code enforcement model that can, um, have better eyes on the street and more constant and regular enforcement. We think that's very necessary for this program. So, um, we're excited to roll it out, and we're happy to answer questions if you have them.
Questions?
One, just thing I want, Sandra, could you let them know that there are a few more businesses that actually have been approved with the Employee Parking Management Plan?
Yes.
If you wanna go through the list. You've actually made that a condition now of quite a few.
Several businesses have been approved during the entitlement stage. Not all of those businesses are up and running. The next ones we'll see will be Protea, um, which hopes to open this next month, um, also Stuart Sellers, which will open this summer in June, uh, but also RH, um, Handwritten, we'll see those soon as well. Jessup Sellers has, um, been approved, so it is applying to businesses in town, and it's rolling out as the businesses, um, implement their permits. Oh, one more is Arena Galleries at Washington Square.
And I do think Sandra said a really good point. We're really trying something out of the box. We've studied other communities. Some of those don't make sense in Yountville. We've also heard loud and clear from the council and the community that we need to try something. So, I think while we're all working through this, we're trying to develop something that makes sense and holds the businesses accountable for the, uh, actions of their employees. So, we certainly appreciate your feedback, and, um, Sandra's pointed out that we will be doing spot checks and some stings periodically, and it will lead us to look at, um, some different code enforcement models, but we will also have a revenue stream coming in that may allow for some part-time staff support in those areas.
And to which businesses are, will this apply? We have businesses that are already operating that were approved with their parking requirements before this. Are you saying any new businesses coming in?
We're applying it to new businesses and those that, um, have approvals where this was part of the requirement.
That this was part, what was part of the requirement? Do they have a management plan?
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't they already have a management plan?
Um, businesses that have been on operation have provided, um, plans to staff, but it's, um, more goals on how they'll manage employees and how they provide employees information on where to park. This program, we believe, applies, um, to new businesses that haven't implemented that a program that staff has...
So, it's not gonna be, every business in town is gonna be part of this program. It's new businesses that need a, need parking to open.
Correct.
And also, what I would say is...
Any amendment to a business...
What we have done based on the council's direction is, when we have an opportunity, you've asked us to make sure that, you know, what I would say in the past is there's been a, a lack of clarity on what an employee parking management plan was.
Well, I think there also needs to be clarity on when it, you just mentioned, Sandra, when this might trigger with an existing business.
Correct.
We're not talking about that right here. I don't...
No, no, this is an update, because the trigger mechanism is when it's a new business, a new use permit, or a modification of the use permit that triggers the change. And that's why we've mentioned about ten businesses that have come before the council in the last year and a half that this will be applicable to. But to your point, there are a lot of other businesses that were approved at a different point in time, and at this point, they're not covered by this. So, it's in, you know, right now...
So, it's, it's staff's, um, it's staff's opinion as to what triggers, uh, significant?
No, actually, the council has made all those decisions. Those have been, the, the direction on those have all been council actions when you...
No, I, what I'm talking about is an existing business that has a modification, the level of modification is, uh, my question is, that triggers this implementation of a parking plan, we don't have that defined. That's, that's a...
I would say that's fair. We've been, right now, we've been doing on, on those that come to the council.
That's a discretionary staff call.
Yes.
I, I would say we've been bringing them all to the council. The question that I know where you're, you're leading to is, we are looking at trying to make sure that it, it has an appropriate nexus. So, that is something we're cautious. Right now, the only time we've been generally applying it has been when a formal use permit modification is brought to the council.
Any other questions from Councilmember Durham?
Um, I just wanna reiterate, or ask here, in your, in your report, you put some neighbors have expressed concern that employees are already parking in these two areas, and that the issue needs to be better addressed by the town. I mean, so, if we, if Velagio Hurley's Bistro Gianti, that they do not, they are not a part of this employee parking management plan, nor is, um, so for that side of town, nor is, um, Yountville, uh, Napa Valley Lodge. So, ultimately, I mean, I, the town is not responsible for parking those cars, of those employees. I mean, just because an employee is parking their car in front of your house, you do not, it does not justify you picking up the phone and calling the town and saying this employee has to be moved, correct?
Correct. It is, um, a public street and open to whomever wants to park there, but we, the town does approve use permits and master development plans, and we know there's a parking impact with employees, and that's what this policy is intended to, um, help relieve some of those impacts. So, to, instead of having a business tell all employees to park offsite and push that burden to, to the residents, it's to find a place onsite for, for all parking uses to sort of coexist.
To coexist. So, just because you can't park in front of your house sometimes, or every once in a while, because there's another car parked there, does not, is, is not part of the employee mark, parking management policy?
Right. And I also think, uh, Councilmember Durham, this is a good clarification, because what we're doing right now is a program that the, the enforcement mechanism is related to their conditional use permit, not the individual employee. The individual employee can park in a public parking spot, that's fine. If they continue to do that in violation of the approved employee parking management plan that the business has, the business will be the one that we have a conversation with. And I think that's what we're, what's unique about what we're trying to do. And, and since it's new, it, it will be rolling out, and we've got some nuances as we look at it, um, and we certainly will continue, because what I would say is, you know, this is a change in direction from the council, from prior approvals, and we're working through this, uh, and will continue to work. Um, and we continue to try to address with our businesses, how do they best utilize their own parking lots first? We've also taken a good look at town-owned properties, so that we recognize that the, the town over twenty-five years may have contributed some to the situation by approving a, a combination of projects, so it, it is a, a shared effort.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I just wanna make sure I'm tracking all this, 'cause I'm, I'm a little confused. So, I'm an employee at X, X business that's got an employee sticker, and they give it to me, and let's say, as you indicated, they don't put it in my car. I don't put it in my car, but I go park in a, in front of someone's house here in North Yountville. How do you know? I mean, you don't. It's arbitrage.
Well, actually, that's a very fair, what we're going to do, the reason, it's two-part. We're designating where they should be parking. So, if staff goes to an area where employees of XYZ are supposed to be parking, and we don't see people with vehicles with stickers in those areas, then we have documentation that the program is not being enforced. It's just a different approach, but, um, that's, that's partly, I mean, that's...
I know. And the enforcement of this is the part that I think we're all struggling with, because I carpooled today, so of course my car's not in the parking lot. I got a ride on the bus, but I really parked over in...
But here's what I would say. It's not so much about the individual employee. Think about, what I'm trying to say is, if X business has committed, committed under their employee marking, yeah, parking management plan, that these ten spaces are going to be used by employees, then I'm going to expect that those ten spaces are generally used by employees. That's how we're going to look. Not every individual, because in most cases, that business may actually have more employees than they have on those committed parking spaces. So, it's an effort to see, are they doing it? And are they following through? And as, as Sandra pointed out, it is gonna take some time. I mean, it's no different, you know, it's sort of a reverse, um, resident parking permit program, which has its own issues, because then you've got different parking enforcement, and when the visitors come and all that. So, it's, I, I will say, you know, we will continue to, to evaluate, evolve. Um, it's new, just like I was listening to some folks, they're bringing back a conversation of paid parking and parking meters in Napa. So, it's an interesting conversation as different communities try to deal with the parking challenge.
So, I'm gonna flip the question around. If somebody goes to Yountville Community Park to use the park, and there's nowhere to, for their vehicle, and there are empty employee priority spaces, and they park there, what do we do about it?
Well, we're still looking at, into how we'd like to treat that situation. I think we are thinking that it should be an employee-designated zone, so it shouldn't be for non-employees, and so they could potentially be ticketed.
By whom?
By the sheriff.
So, the sheriff would have enforcement capacity, but not the other way around. If an employee has a sticker and they're parked in front of a residence, that car's not getting ticketed.
Correct.
Well...
Under that scenario, you're correct.
There may be occasions when an employee is in town on-off hours, and their car has a sticker, but they're going out to dinner, and they are parking in a non-designated zone, but it is...
What, what I would say...
Right.
So, there are challenges.
Yes, there are.
The best example right now is, the lot here behind Town Hall is actually a restricted Yountville Elementary School and town of Yountville employee. We all have a permit identification. People can be ticketed if they're in that parking lot between eight and five, and they are occasionally. And what I would say is, that's the type of situation that would happen in the restricted zone. So, in this particular case, I think we'd be talking about just a handful of restricted zones where it will say, "Permit required," and something like that. So, we're still working. Those two areas have yet to come forward. Um, right now, we're talking about the, the discussion, you know, Hotel Yountville's commitments are under discussion. The idea of an employee restricted zone is new on the north end of town. Right now, we know employees are parking in Yountville Community Park, they're using that area. So, that would be how I would say, those would be two unique situations.
Okay. Councilmember Durham?
There's challenges, but I think, I think this is a, a good stride, given the fact, I mean, the application has license plate numbers on it. It has model, year, color of car, at least we're making an effort. As I walk, as I walk to Vandeleer Park every day with, throughout the day, um, and see employees parking there from the French Laundry that are block, partially blocking the driveway, that are partial, that are blocking entrances to get into the homes, I think this is a good effort to be made. Now, unfortunately, they're not on the list, but the point being is, we'll be able to deal with that in the future. So, when the, when the homeowners come to me and complain about parking, we at least have something to fall back on. So, I wanna commend you. I, and I go back to my original comment. Employees are gonna park in front of your house. I lived in San Francisco for sixteen years. I was lucky if I got six blocks within my house, let alone my front door. So, I think it's great what you guys are doing thus far, so.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, enforcement's gonna be challenging, but I agree that, um, making an effort, and it'll have to evolve as we find out what we don't know yet.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I, I think it's also important that the, the residents know that we're really listening to them, you know, that this is, um, you know, something that they do complain about, and yes, someone can park on a, on a public street, but this is going to hopefully go, you know, in a positive direction to help mitigate that. And what they can do, you know, they're not gonna be able to call up, you know, somebody in the town and say, "Move this car," but they can go on Speak Up Yountville, or when we get our app, and they can put in the information, so you guys can track it, you know, maybe one-off that an employee with a sticker is parked in front of your house, but if it's every Monday through Friday, you know, week after week, we definitely wanna know that, because, you know, we can help them if they help us, too. It's not a matter of writing people out, but it's really a matter of, you know, I think that we're listening to the residents. We're, you know, I think it's important that we really balance, um, the businesses with the residents, and we're trying to keep all these very productive businesses on Washington Street and out of our neighborhoods, and we're gonna, it's not gonna be perfect, but we're gonna, we're doing something. So, I, we, we've heard them.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts on that? Thank you very much. Moving on to meeting reports, uh, very quickly, the only thing I wanted to bring up with our last Napa County Flood Control meeting was, we did receive, thank you, Sergeant, we did receive a, a, a status update after the severe, uh, storm events, that basically all the, um, flood mitigation measures that are operating were operating very effectively. There is virtually no flooding. The bypass did not kick in, even though there was some water in the bypass channel, but that was some tidal and some other localized, uh, water accumulations. So, that was the gist of our flood control. Uh, Napa County, or Napa Valley Transportation Authority is meeting tomorrow, so we'll have an update at the next meeting. Is there any, uh, Waste Authority update necessary?
We're meeting on Monday.
Okay. Next meeting.
Got a question.
Other meetings?
Do you know, do you recall, uh, County Cleanup or Yountville Cleanup Day? Is that, has that been scheduled yet?
It's the week after Mother's Day.
Yeah.
It's the, the day before Mother's Day.
Garage sales.
The garage sale, and the week af, and the week after is the...
It's May fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, okay.
May seventh is the townwide garage sale, May fourteenth is Cleanup Day, and then April twenty-second is Shred It at West America Bank.
That's Earth.
Two to four, Friday.
Thank you.
Uh, other reports or announcements?
I have, uh, some, a couple of, uh, well, we talked about Shred It Day, April twenty-second, 'cause you need time to clean out all that paper, but also, I attended the, a Town Hall meeting at the Veterans Home yesterday, and, uh, it's interesting, because I wrote his name down, I can always remember how to spell it. Both the Secretary, Dr. Vito Embasciani, and the Undersecret, Undersecretary Russell Atterbury attended, and they were, um, the, um, Secretary, Dr. Embasciani, um, gave a nice introduction to their Town Hall meeting, and what he addressed was that, um, he's very well, he's, he's new, but he's very well aware of the, the numerous financial challenges up there, uh, primarily due to just year after year of delayed infrastructure, you know, needed.
Fair payments.
You know, just very, very, um, significant, because, you know, one of their oldest buildings up there was like built in nineteen twenty-nine, is still standing, and most everything else was kinda rebuilt, is, you know, the most recent thing in the, in the fifties. So, everything is old. You know, an elevator goes down, there's no parts, they have to go manufacture them. Uh, and so, one thing that he, um, he said that, you know, these, um, enormous financial challenges, challenges with the state, uh, that there, he has been reevaluating, uh, or taking a very close look at that master plan that was put together by the commission, by, uh, the, the business in, that was commissioned by a consultant, uh, in San Francisco a while back, and... And I spoke to both of them afterwards. They've invited us to, you know, the town to certainly have conversations there. They, they think there's some great options in there. They certainly don't have any solutions or proposals right now, but I think that might be something timely for us to consider.
We'll see what the follow-up is. We've heard that with every new undersecretary and every new secretary, so it'll be interesting to see what, what develops there. On the theme of our veterans, I received a media advisory today, and this may not be convenient for all, but I still wanted to bring it up, and I'll leave this with town staff. In Sacramento, the Department of Veterans Affairs is holding a Sacramento Valley National Cemetery to honor Vietnam veterans, a 50th anniversary commemoration ceremony to thank veterans of the Vietnam War, and they have a retired captain as a keynote speaker on March 26th at 10:00 a.m. at the Sacramento Valley National Cemetery, which is 5810 Midway Road. And there's a contact of Cynthia Nunez, phone number 707-693-2460, if anyone is interested in going to that ceremony honoring Vietnam vets. So Julie, I'll leave this here with you. Actually, I could forward you an email if we can maybe make that available for anybody who is interested. And Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one more reminder that on April 30th, between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., the Yountville Community Center will have our Go Green presentation and open house for the entire Yountville community.
Very good. Samantha, did you want to mention anything about our...
I don't know.
Yeah, we have, we have Easter egg hunt coming up. We have Taste of Yountville. I know that's really a Chamber thing, but...
Yeah, so the 26th of March, the day before Easter, we have the Egg Hunt at Yountville Community Park, starts at 10:00. You don't want to be late for an Egg Hunt. We also have Breakfast with a Buddy that starts at 8:45. And then on, as you mentioned, April 2nd is Taste of Yountville. That is run through the Chamber of Commerce, but does take place at our facility partially. And then April 16th is Art Sip and Stroll, our fourth annual, so don't miss that.
Tickets are available for Taste of Yountville on the Chamber's website.
Yes, and you can pre-buy your wristbands for Art Sip and Stroll on the town's website.
Very good. And we also have Yountville Live, the second annual, is coming up April, well, actually, March 30, 31st, April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And that's available also through yountvillive.com, I believe. So lots going on in town. Any other announcements? Seeing none. I don't see any closed session listed, so we don't really, we didn't even get to introduce our, our interim town attorney. We didn't allow him to speak, but we thank you for coming down from Grass Valley.
Thank you very much, Senator.
And thank you for enjoying our town while you were here today. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to our next regular meeting of Tuesday, April 5th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.